We'll call the special session, the Mexico district concessions, which will all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which has one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite in justice.
Okay. Next, have a motion for approval on the agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda. Second? All in favor? Okay. Move on to number two, which is approval of the vacancy superintendent position. Marlo, do I need to, we vote on that or do you want?
Maybe we need a motion, they need to vote on this.
Okay, so can I have a motion on approval of vacancy superintendent position? Second? All in favor? Okay. Number three for the search calendar discussion. Go to that and Bill, if you want to take us through.
Yeah, I will run. You will get a bachelor. Calendar once you get everything set. So this is just my work, OSBA with the fancy calendar. This is just a stab, you know, we're doing the latent search. You know, we're still within that sweet spot. We're moving towards the point where you worry about how many and what kind of applicants you'll get for the position. So you see what you're doing tonight, March 8th. So, so that's all we'll be taking care of. One of the things we talked about tonight is on the survey, whether you want to do that or not. If you do, you can see we're suggesting the survey only be open for about four or five days. And then come back at your March 14th for me. One of the key steps we need to have you do before we begin to hit the streets is to discuss and adopt the qualities and qualifications that you'd like to see in your new superintendent. Now, I would suggest, Marlo, I can help you find that when Greg is out here and helps you with your last search. We should at least have you look at those qualities and qualifications as a starting point. So you're not starting from scratch on those and you can change them based on, on the change times.
What are the power of survey?
We'll then talk about that. We typically, in the old days, pre-COVID days, we would come out and send the focus groups all through the district. Staff, administrators, community, students, the whole works. COVID kind of halted that in most districts. At the same time, most of this, and it's part of your package that you contracted for, is we have a survey that really gets three different things. What about banks and the high school district? Can we use to attract candidates? That's good. What are any major issues? You'll see the district facing over the next one to three years. And probably the most important one, what are the characteristics you'd like to see in your next superintendent? We get pretty good response rates. Just doing Morrow County search, it's a little bigger than here, but not much. We had 400 applicants to that survey. I did Woodburn, just finished Woodburn. We had 600 there. Of course, there we had it in Spanish and Russian as well, so, yeah.
So when you do the survey, how do you track if more than one person is running the survey?
Ron, that question always comes up and the response is, we can't. But if you get enough responses, you know, it all evens out. So if you want to do the survey, it all comes out of the OSBA office and then once the survey closes, then we start getting printouts of what's coming. Both in terms of the checkoff things, plus you'll see all the comments that come in as well.
So the survey has an opportunity for someone to write something out?
Yes.
Pre-selected, okay.
Now, we, I say we, must be does a pre-screen, so anything that says that is public, it shouldn't be published, but we'll get screened out, but that's a very if they say Ron should never been the board chair, we leave that in. Something else. Something else, we'll take that out.
But like the staff, the teachers, everybody, their comments would be filtered into that same
Yes. And the key is probably going to be here. Because you have the email of contacts that we don't have, the staff.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, so we have not only, you know, staff directories, vice directors, right? All that internal, but we also have, I think it's student view, is that what you use? That we could reach out to everyone in the district.
Yeah, that's good. Just want to blanket all your stakeholders and even your high school kids.
Yeah, okay.
Would like them to participate if you have that access.
Good. Just to, I, if you, if you sent me the link, I have the capability of sending to every parent immediately and every staff member. It just so, it would definitely reach the parents and staff. And then Mr. Pence can send it to all the high school students and
That's great. So you just blanket the community. And so we'll finish this up. You can just say, yeah, we'll do it and I'll get that order tomorrow. I make the end of it one thing clear. I used to say I was the pretty face of the search, but I realize I'm not the pretty face. But anything that, no, we go to Sarah. So I'm in boots on the ground. She's, she's the boots behind the ground, so she does all the work, so. And I think the survey was administered, if I missed it. When Jeff is here.
I said it all the time.
I think you've used the survey before.
Yeah.
And one last thing on the survey, you know, the information is valuable, but it's the reach out is just invaluable. People are saying, hey, the board wants to hear from, from me on where they should go. So if we can turn this around, it's probably not going to happen. Is your board meeting on the 14th? Well, yep, that's next week. Monday. Okay. Let me check with Sarah tomorrow and see how quickly they get that link out. I think I'll just, they need to go through and make sure it's a bank's survey to change a few things and they can send that out. I'll check with her. So on the 14th. Let me think about that. And Ron and Marlo, I'll get back to you after I talk with Sarah.
Okay. Well, we're getting used to having special sessions.
So I was going to go there. So I think the other important date to think about is if we could pull the 14th off, it's five weeks out of the time to leave the position open. We usually shoot from five to six. Every search I've been involved in, there's been less than you get the rush of applicants two or three days before closing anyway, so. So my advice is just stick with the the five weeks, so you're not we're not shortchanging the candidate pool. The candidate pool has been interesting. We've always had some impact on the candidate pool. On the west side of the state, we're getting pretty good numbers. I had 18 in Corvus. Which is not a bad of course, they're earlier, and 17 in Woodburn. You get to the east side of the state and you're lucky to get 10. So hopefully we can get in that 15 to 18 range here. Everything I see, you got an attractive district, so location is good. The other issue to think about, most boards have a screening committee. That committee consists of staff, community members. Some places try to put a high school student on there, but the work is so intensive, they just unable to schedule and stick with it. You know, that's, that's your call.
How many people are usually on?
Well, interesting. We usually recommend 12 to 15. I think I had 28 in Woodburn. Lots of different passions of community and needs addressed, so somewhere in that range. And I can work with, with Marlo on drafting a little piece on if you're interested. But somebody, you know, vice president, that's your day. Their role can differ. Probably their first main role is to help you with screening the paper applications. So not only do you get your chance to let those applications also in the screening committee. We have, everybody, once they've screened all the applications and it's all their time now, so you're not sharing the paper to rank your top candidates. And that number will depend on how many applicants we get. Usually we're talking about 10. And then those rankings are tabulated from shared with the board to help you decide who you want to bring in for that first level. So it's your call. You'll find one thing that I will do that even though we'll always encourage public input, we don't want to lose the message that the board makes a decision. So throughout the process, we'll reinforce that. Let's see, what else on the calendar should we talk about tonight? Everything, once we start screening this, all confidential, all in session. We have everybody sign a confidentiality agreement. I think in my many years of doing this kind of work, I've had one community member who violated and was asked to withdraw from the screening committee. So he was given names to the press before he should have been given out. So, yeah, that's the only one I can think of.
So on the, on the applications, is that something that we appoint? Or is that something that people volunteer by filling out a form and then?
Yeah, Ron, usually we let people have an option to let you know if they're interested.
No, I'm just thinking in general, I don't know how if we put it out there, an application or a link on the website to let people to apply, there's a time duration for that. You know, so many days for them to submit an application if they're interested.
Yeah.
We might get a large volume that then we have to sort through to try to get down to 12 to, or 12 to 15 people.
And that can happen.
So I just, I didn't know where that was at in.
Well, it's, those activities, that to, per year, that by weeks.
Okay.
Position, things tend to get quiet.
Okay.
As far as your work is concerned for those five weeks.
Okay, so that can happen, yeah, that process, okay.
The other options you consider, most districts will invite the screening committee to observe the initial interviews. The board conducts the interviews. They observe and then give you their feedback on what they saw. So you have more information to help you decide who should be your finalists. Right now, we're doing all the initial interviews. When you get to the final stage, we encourage you, depending on what's going on with COVID, to have the finalists come in, spend at least a day in the district. We can talk about that when we get closer to that. Once similar finalists are selected, we turn, people lose to do social media internet checking. We don't do any reference checking at this stage because a lot of your applicants may have got told their employer that they're looking. Now, when it hits finalist stage, then we get serious about reference checking. And we'll help you with that process as well. But towards the bottom of the page, we hold the, what we call the data district. We debrief the reference checks as a board. And you conduct your final interview. As far as interviews, any of you on the board, when you hire this guy? Ron, you were, okay. So typically, the interview questions for the initial interviews are set of questions that you agree to. And so you ask each candidate the same question. For some opportunity, you go off if there needs to be. When it comes to final interviews, you'll help develop this set of questions, but they're more free flowing, more targeted at the candidate. And only make sure you give the candidate enough time to ask you questions. This could change, probably get a little old, but I describe this process as a worship. The candidates need to impress you that they belong here and you need to impress them that you belong here. So we want to make sure everybody looks good on both sides, just to see if there's a, if there's a match to be made. Oh, I think the last thing on this calendar, OSBA, because of policy, does not get involved in negotiating the contracts. We don't want to, usually the board will, select the board member to, and then you turn sit down and usually start with your present contract and go from there. So I'll fine tune this after I talk with OSBA tomorrow. And we'll get a calendar. I think tonight, I'm not sure if the formal approval, if you just say, hey, it's okay, based on what you're seeing now to move ahead with the formal calendar.
I think one, we want to check with Sarah on how fast we can get the survey.
Yeah.
And then let us know to see if we gives us a day or so to talk about it. This calendar.
I'm guessing if you decide go with the survey, you'll have the link tomorrow. So then you may not know the site that quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
Without the survey, you're kind of a little bit fighting in the dark. Since we're not doing the focus groups.
I really like that dynamic exchange.
Yeah.
This isn't, this isn't something, I guess, an efficient way to collect it.
Yeah, yeah. This is too bad. And hopefully OSBA, once things go along with COVID, they'll, they'll open up. So that process, yeah.
Well, sorry for timing of this, maybe you had some late rabbis, but so what we were talking about was on March 9th to the 13th, an online survey that would be conducted by OSBA. It would, the survey would consist of to allow the surveyors to input data as opposed to just checking a box. And that would be going out to everyone that was in the student view. You know, all the notifications that Justin's out and then all the teachers and administrators and then also trying to hit seniors or people that are in the high school.
And what are the, how do we know what questions are on that survey?
That's normally want to take that.
Oh, yeah. Well, I can tell you in general, I don't have a copy with me, trust me. Really three things that the survey gets at. The first one is, what about banks can we use to sell the district candidate committee to help attract candidates? So what's, what's going on here that we can sell candidates on? Now, the survey, it's a combination checklist and comments. So we'll see both the results of the checklist and also the comment that comes up. The second thing we try to probe is what do you see as the three to five major challenges that district is going to face over the next one to five years? In your case, it'll probably show enrollment, show up, other things that I'm not aware of, that people might be aware of. And probably the most critical part in terms of your work is we ask people to, to rank qualities and qualifications they think the new superintendent should bring to the table, to be a viable candidate. And so, so three years. And then report out, you'll see the results. We show it three different ways. We show how the board responded, so we want all of you to respond to the survey. We show how the screening committee responded. And then we show how the combination of everybody who is on the training team and how they respond. The, our disadvantage is tiny. You know. Usually having more time to administer that before we get on the street. We think getting on the street is pretty important. Yeah.
That's helpful. So is, there is, the fill-in answers, they're all check marks?
No, no, there's comments.
How do we see the comments?
You'll just get a printout.
Okay. Can we get a copy of that?
Of the survey? You will. You have to fill it out.
Before it starts, before we
Yeah, I can have listen to you. Yeah. Yeah. It's pretty similar to the one you used. How long you been here?
Seven years.
Last time.
Yeah, just if we could get it before we prove it, that'd be great.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay, so Mel, this good, this takes us through basically the end of April. So we have May and to kind of go through you know, the final stages, the interview and negotiations. So that means hopefully we can get that done and that in the month of May, so that means they're starting or hired by the start of June.
Yeah. I think, I think we should try to shoot for midnight. Now, I don't know how much OSBA talk to you folks. I mean, your backup plan is if the pool is not good, then we help you find it. And then we do have a, we do have a good pool of candidates that are interested. And then we start to search up next fall, original time. And that's all included in the back, so.
Will, I don't know if you heard this part, but right now, on the west side of Oregon, they're getting between 15 and 18 applicants. On the east side, it's
Finish.
And how many of those are out of state?
Oh, let's finish that. That's interesting. Oregon and Washington superintendent's retired.
I'm sorry.
Are tired. So we're getting very few experienced Oregon superintendent candidates. They've had COVID, all that stuff along with that. We're getting some quality candidates who are assistant superintendents in Oregon. Out of state, we get a lot of applicants out of Alaska. Not many of them make the cuts because of sometimes the districts have plenty of kids. And Alaska is really cutting back on their retirement and their insurance benefits for educators. And that's causing a lot of people to last and try to get out. Idaho, Montana, I think of the search I've got going on now in Morrow County, Indiana. So it varies.
How would candidates on the east coast hear about us?
Well, good question. I'm glad you brought that up. OSBA still works with Greg McKenzie on the marketing. And over time, Greg has massed the email bank of about 40,000 plus administrators throughout many of the west coast, the western United States. So once that vacancy brochure is finished, that's a button, that's the hands of 40,000 people. Now, that is, I'm probably not super the five. Usually what happens is that, and that's part of the appeal that goes out is if you know somebody who can do this job, encourage them to apply. We probably get to 60, 70% of our candidates through that route. We post on Oregon administrators or the school boards, Western administrators, Idaho administrators, other posting websites. And we probably get, in California, we probably get the other 30, 40% from that posting.
So now there's an assistant superintendent in a district of 2,500 students in Virginia, know where we have a position.
Yeah.
How would he, how does that person know?
Oh, well, the natural thing is if they're in Greg's email bank.
Okay.
The other thing is if they're looking for a position here, they typically would go to COSA or WASTA or OSBA or Western administrators. And look at the postings there. That's a typical.
I noticed that there is an OSBA, there's your equivalent in almost every other state.
Yeah, some the OSBA just recently got back in the search business.
But it seems there are search, there are, there are SBA associations in almost every state that have search arms, it appears.
Yeah, now Washington school boards were in it and they've dropped, so they're no longer in the search business. In very some state by state.
Do you market through those organizations?
Oh, yeah.
You do?
Yeah. Yeah, it's if somebody's, somebody's looking, it's hard for them to find us. We may not reach a quality candidate who's not looking.
Is there any connection with our website if they, with the search, is it posted on our website?
Certainly, definitely. Yeah. And we'll direct people to your website. I'll even go through the website. I have a certain, and I have a few suggestions, I'll pass on to Marlo and Jeff on that as well. Good questions.
Okay, so as we were on number three, I think did you want to table the approval of the calendar?
You know, I think the main points there that caused me to recommend that, Ron, is not knowing how soon we get that survey back and out. We get it out quickly.
Yeah.
To get it back at a reasonable time. I'm not sure why I put the 14th on there because probably it's your board many days.
Yeah.
Yeah. So
So you're proposing now that the survey go on, just be out from the 9th to the 13th? In the field from 9th to 13th?
Yeah, unless it takes you folks some time to think it through, we can adjust that.
So just, if you said just four days in the field.
Well, we could extend it. I'm just worried about your timeline.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why is it extended just maybe a short time? Because I think a lot of people maybe become more aware of it, but the school, we thought it was going to be in the middle.
Yeah. They'll really come, become aware of it with the email blast. Yeah. So, yeah, it's not ideal. We usually like to give at least six or seven days. And then we could do that. I think I got tied into that 14th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that, let's make it.
Yeah, we can do that. It sort of requires especially sometime shortly after that. So you need to adopt the qualities and qualifications. And then we can finish up the recruitment brochure. There's other things we need that will rely on Marlo and Jeff on, these good photos. Some descriptions of the district can get our hands on.
And do you have boilerplate qualities and qualifications for us?
Well, typically what we'll do is once we get that survey data, we do have boilerplate, but we want to take that survey data and make any alterations based on what we hear from the survey. And then the main thing is you folks have to be happy with it.
So you'll, you'll give us a proposed
Yes. Yes, yes, yes. Yeah. We will do that.
Good.
And back to the calendar, Ron, I think I'd rather get you the I don't want to say the fancy, but the I don't say the fancy, but the more distinct calendar for you to.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
This is just good to get everyone's mind focused on dates and how, you know. Part of the reason why I have been kind of pushing is I know we're right behind.
So it's, it's probably reasonable to release the survey next week. Is that kind of?
I think so. I think we could announce it at, you know.
At the board meeting.
And then hit it out the next day and then let it go.
Probably Sunday night or something.
We could be ready to go. Yeah. So at least as you warned me, you could say.
It's out there. Before.
Yeah.
How many, did you say? How many people are typically on the search page?
Uh, yeah, we talked about that.
No, you're fine.
It varies. I just finished the search in Woodburn. We had like twenty-five additions to board. Work a little unwilling, but usually recommend the board plus twelve to fourteen.
And selection process?
I'll work with Marlo on a little board that comes out from the district, inviting people to. Apply to be on the screening committee.
And what we used by which to measure them just for selection?
You, you will make those decisions.
Sure.
Yeah, you want to, you want a broad base. You want teachers from all levels, classified people, administrator for two. And then members of the community.
Are we required to publish those guidelines that we're using for selection? Marlo, you know. Would we be required to publish the, the selection criteria for this search page?
I think we have published the selection.
Yeah.
The criteria, would we?
Wouldn't we just have to publish whose apartments?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
But that's different than the.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, say we have a hundred applicants want that one beyond the search committee.
Yeah.
And then how do we filter through that to get, you know.
You probably decide how many you wanted to. Administrator, classified, certified.
Yeah.
And then what was left, you would put.
Try maybe do one.
Cross section.
That might be enough.
Yeah. Well, that could be a nice problem to have. Step forward. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's a reverse.
Yeah, well, yeah.
If you have an active staff committee, you'll get plenty.
Oh, I'm not worried about getting money. I'm worried about people not getting selected.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so let's, so on number three, we have our discussion. Let's table the approval. Let's move on to qualities and qualifications discussion.
Yeah, and Ron, I think that's.
We kind of talked about that already.
Just gonna wait till we.
Do the.
So you'll get us something to work with.
Exactly.
Stream consciousness, right?
Yeah.
I appreciate that. He sent out someone for us on the internet that just said this is somebody who's thinking of qualifications and. But did you say we should look at the ones that they used for Jeff, for the search for Jeff?
Because it might help.
So maybe.
Trigger some thoughts.
Yeah, do you would have that?
Well, yeah, I think.
Yeah, yeah. See that just to kind of get a vision of where that was.
Would you have a copy of the search brochure?
I do.
Is it electronic? You can send out the.
I can look and see if I have that.
Okay, because that'll give you a feel. It hasn't changed a whole lot.
I'll see what I can find.
Okay. Yeah, since Greg did that one, we'll be doing this one too, so.
Otherwise, I could go in for. Packet on for Monday.
We do that too. Do you have a hard copy?
Okay, so.
So I. I think the thing, and you don't have to make this decision tonight unless you're ready. We want to publish a solid range. That you're comfortable with. Usually the range is eight to twelve thousand. From bottom to top. You have your present salary. Now, I need to point out with the freshies that you have, younger year old, you don't have the data for this. Tabulated by OSBI. So that's salaries from. Two thousand, two thousand, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven.
That's what this is?
Yeah.
This is two thousand, two thousand and eleven?
No, two thousand twenty-one.
Two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, or two thousand twenty.
Okay, yeah. So they like to do their year old.
Year old.
Yeah.
So you have two, you have comparisons based on geography. The challenge there is you're going to be looking to. Some of those places, but you get a feel for it. And then we do a. Survey for you that takes a look at like size districts. Across the state, so. Nothing magic about it. And you've got your present salary on there. So I don't know what your thoughts are. These are timed, you can put this on your Monday agenda. On the fourteen.
Were we able to say, or you said a range of the salary now is like.
Yeah.
He can say one fifty to one sixty-two.
Yeah, what kind of, when you say range, what do you look at?
He said.
And then that would be based on experience and how.
Experience and, yeah. And. Training, no, you might, you might bump up a little bit in the range. Or not, so.
Do you know anything about? The tenure of these hires?
Uh, well, I don't. But I could find out. Are you looking at the retail or the?
I'm just looking at all of them because they're all relevant.
Yeah.
I mean, they're just sizing in proximity based, pretty consistently. I'd be curious what level of previous experience they had when they were hired.
Well. Don's going to leave him for quite a while. But he's retiring.
The superintendent Beaverton?
Yeah. Don Brian. I don't know. I think class tires turned over in the last two, three years.
That's not my question. My question is what, when they were hiring, what their. So for hiring an inexperienced person versus.
Yeah, we'd have to go up and pull out their applications. If we had them in the.
And I guess I would also say that. We just have a bigger range and we just have the terms based off of experience.
And your loan strain may, maybe lower than paying out, that's. You can do that.
And it looks like a hundred forty to a hundred sixty is the world kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and it just goes to your question of based off of experience.
Right. That gives us at least enough range.
Well, I mean, back to the, you know, what makes us attractive, right? If we're giving, you know, a decent salary and. Twenty days of vacation. Working days twenty-two, uh, two hundred twenty. So, you know, I think that there's some competitive.
Yeah, absolutely. Agreed.
Not to mention our beautiful location.
But.
Amazing architecture.
Yeah, I could say that you have some boards in the state who really love their salaries. To track candidates.
I bet.
Grants five cent about thirty thousand to their rate.
And those have a great location too, right? I mean, we are really at a place where you could live.
Goes all this traffic to get there for us.
But if, but if people don't know us and they look at the range immediately, say, oh, that's. Yeah, yeah, it's just based off of monetary and we're just.
And the other thing, if you want to, just think about this for Monday, I will go through and. And look at the searches that are going on now by district and let you know what those ranges are.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah. Have Sarah do that.
Cause I'm, yeah, sure they're going up.
Like everything. Yeah, they are. And as far as the rest of the package, you can deal with that later. In the process. And usually have you. Your present contract, yeah.
So we need, we need to figure out the salary range as part of our application when we set that up.
Um, you could, if you want to.
Yeah, I, I guess.
He's got, you give that access to that, it'd be nice to have it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll check with Sarah. She's, she's also busy with a couple songs in search of song.
Chris, to answer your question, I think we need to, we, we get the salary range. You know, after we, we can do that right before it gets sent out. To all the boards and emails.
One of my things, I can do that. I don't have to allow her. I have access to all the postings.
Yeah.
So if we can get that in the.
Yeah.
The copy of those questions for the survey. That will have to be shared, but I can get a solid connection.
Yeah, and I guess I would be curious, like first year administrator comes in. What that's, what that starting range is.
Yeah. Yeah, it's hard to tell because you may have a principal come in that's being paid more than your salary.
Yeah, well, and, and, well, I guess that's.
They're in a larger industry.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, one of the interesting things, we're getting very, very few applicants out of Washington. Two years ago, through legislation, through lots of. The Washington salaries went sky high. And so about the only people we get out of Washington are those who retired and still want to work. But if they're practicing in Washington. We don't see many coming. To the south. Because of the south. Uh, let me, I, I need to. Board, I need to just make sure I'm clear on the survey. You want to see the questions? And then. Will you make a decision on? On Monday at your board meeting?
I would say this is, is if you're able to send us the questions.
Right.
If we have a couple of days to review the questions to get back to you. So, so we could try to get, you know, get that set up so we could send it out. I guess in my mind, it'd be great to announce that, you know, on Monday. At, at the board meeting, that the survey is coming out to everybody. Please take the time to fill it out.
So you don't want to send it out Sunday? You want to wait till?
Yeah, and then, you know, the next day we just hit them with the parent view emails and all the other stuff.
I'll consider that when I revamp the calendar.
And then we're going to leave that open until the following Monday?
And then we leave it open a week? Yeah.
Yeah, I think we do that quite easily. Yeah.
And how long does it take for y'all to compile the data?
I'm sure.
Get that back, that's okay.
I like the old days. At the hand tower.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm used to it.
Pages of them.
Sounds like probably.
But to be careful on the comments. One person, plus you see the same comment a hundred times.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess.
Probably a message.
If someone says, you know, integrity, and that's, you know, number one on their list or whatever, does that get tabulated?
Oh.
We have, you know, three hundred people that said integrity was in the top three. Do we see that?
Well, no, because integrity is going to be on the list. Of characteristics, so hopefully integrity is high, they will.
Are you going to define what, what you mean by integrity?
I'm sorry, but. Case in point, but I mean. Yeah, okay.
Lots of assumptions.
That's where I want to see the survey.
Okay.
I'll check this out. And then I'll have the salary range information to tomorrow. Um. Can I think? Yeah, I'd like. I'd like to join you on Monday, at least by Zoom, but I think I'm tied up in. A part of all day.
Well, we do have Zoom available.
I'll, I'll see what the schedule is like.
Even out here.
Yeah, even out here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Um. Yeah. And I'll be brief, just. A little bit of myself. I'm a recovering superintendent. I retired six years ago. Within two months of that work. I was a student, can be. Can miss Washington, that's control. I can see that speed, so that's the experience as well. Um, in August. Small district board in Washington that we've done some work with for. Called and said, can you come in and talk to us about doing a search? We just lost our superintendent. Says, well, it's August, so. Yeah. So I came in, we had a nice discussion, about halfway through a little feisty board member who I. Really respect said. I think we found our superintendent. I said, okay, that's fine. Nice talking to you. Said, no, sit down, you're it. So I'm not a superintendent that God doesn't school this. But it's a, I'm only paid for two days a week, so it gives me time to search for it, so. And we had sixty-one kids, eighty-eight and. It's just loving, so other than the way. It's right across the river from Harvard, so we get the same kind of encouragement that Corbett does.
Are you getting, uh, last time there were some applicants outside the main channels, like. Not previous principals. Are you seeing this for that, people from outside, not from outside, the, the world, I mean, it is so much.
Right. Not a whole lot, though. Yeah, I think the searches we're doing now. We have principals who are becoming finalists. Uh, and a number of districts just because the superintendent pool is so low. We just finished working Whitburn. And it's not public yet, we still negotiated contract with the two finalists. At instead of the superintendent experience. So it varies. By district. I think. Corbett has four. By this, only one has superintendent experience. Rest of principal system, superintendent.
I guess what I'm talking about is outside of the principal superintendent pipeline.
Yeah.
So people from.
Yeah.
Governments.
Yeah. I got you. It's a little hard now because of certification requirements. So they'd have to qualify for an orange superintendent certificate.
Right.
And depending on what they're activated that round is, that could be. Or it's going to apply for emergency certificates. As long as your person commits to finishing the program.
I was just gonna say, what, would there be any way somebody hadn't qualified for that but intended to be considered?
I, I think if we wrote up your recruitment brochure, did it allow for that? Again, things access, how do they find out about?
Right.
Yeah. I'm on the board of the two-year acting training school. And we're looking for a new. Managing artistic director. And we had twenty-seven applicants. For jobs that are payable. But we target that, a few theater arts, theater education, so. I'll think about it.
Yeah, I, I guess that's my next question. If you have any thoughts about it.
Yeah.
To reach outside.
Yeah.
What, 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 what might be option, I mean, ESD I suppose might be one.
Yeah.
The Oregon Department, Oregon Board might be one.
I can tell you this, and this is a real just general comment, over the years, non-traditional. Candidates. Haven't fared too well. Even if they get the job, they haven't fared too well. We've had supervisors. Had careers in military. And have been able to qualify for certification. But there's such a difference between your background in the military and what we see in public schools that they just. Couple of years to have. Or have, so.
What about not military?
I think they're out there. I just don't know.
Yeah, so I guess the question of the period is that. Do school districts have. Do school districts have the opportunity to hire someone that does not have the. Predentions to be an administrator, but makes promises to get the certification within a period of time?
I don't know about work, I've been on the order system for a while. Jeff, do you have any idea? Other options for non-initials?
Is that a legal question?
Yeah.
Probably a T S B C question.
T S B C question.
Yeah, Marlo, could you?
Yeah, you can go on the website, if you have a contact there.
I do.
Just thinking, here's where the, my thought process and to go off of what Will was talking about, is um. We are under a tight timeframe.
Right.
And if we are, you know, when we send this out to the world, uh, trying to get applications. Um, and we're trying to, and my goal is trying to get a superintendent this year.
A real one, yeah.
So we don't lose a, yeah, no, qualifications, you know, everything that we're looking for. Um, but I don't want to see us losing here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
That would be ideal. Yeah, as long as you uh. You don't make a mistake at hiring because of the rush.
No, yeah, we don't want to do that.
Yeah.
And my concern is, is that, not not concern, actually, is leadership has evolved dramatically in the last decade.
Yeah.
And um. And academics, academia doesn't necessarily have a corner on that, nor does, nor does in the other industry, but. But uh, I'm, I'm focused personally on hiring a leader first. And then um. Specific job history second. So I just.
Isn't he, you'd have to be prepared for, um, because of the nature of educators. Uh, if you head out and you're serious about that direction, there's the whole credit value issue. That's tend to beat the boards, it's take all the time.
I know for it.
Yeah.
But uh, you know, with Marlo's help, we can find out what's the option, so they've changed the site.
Yeah.
Who's in the business, yeah.
No steps forward, just what what are our options at this point?
Yeah, I think it's worth. Yeah, it's worth pursuing. You just don't anybody coming out of the university system. I'm sorry, Chris.
There's danger. There's dangerous expertise knowledge.
Okay, um, I, you know, you guys, we've gone through all of our lists, um, I'll just open it up, was there anything that? We want to real quick, that we can, no, okay. So then we are, if we're done with our discussion, we can adjourn the, adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Okay. We'll make any stuff to you.
Thank you.
Uh, not present is just each of uh, of shoes.